It is 5:30, let's call a meeting to order. Um, I don't remember, first on the agenda is the Hawthorne Ridge Trail, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mary Castle. At our last meeting, we talked a bit about the Hawthorne Ridge driveway. So outlined in red right now, the trail system is outlined in yellow, so throughout the development, sidewalks are in green. We talked about the condition of the driveway, how recent rains have led to some pretty significant erosion on site. Uh, we had an ask of the council to do a site visit between last meeting and this meeting. We're bringing it back now to discuss what you saw, how you feel, and expectations moving forward. Did everyone have a chance to go up and check it out?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good.
Thought it was spectacular.
It was a really nice walk for us.
Mm-hmm. No, I really, I agree. I, you know what, it's a, it's a minimum maintenance trail. I had a nice walk, I didn't fall down. Um, I think it would be sad to lose that, and I think people are gonna use it regardless, because it's there. Um, minor things like the tree falling down there, I mean, at the chainsaw, chop it up and it's done. But I've, I found the walk to be perfectly fine with the expectation this was minimum maintenance. So I didn't have any problems, even with the leaf cover, I didn't have any problems like falling into anything, Brian.
It was, it didn't fall in there.
So Brian, the power line, what's going on with that? Is that coming out or staying in?
Something we gotta find out for sure. Um, I don't know.
That was exposed.
Yeah, that's exposed. I don't know if that's coming out or not, so. I don't know if that was her original service or what it was, so there is a power line there.
But will be cut, right? Or is that not, don't know at all?
I don't know that for sure.
I mean, because there's no power to it, then it doesn't.
Right.
Right.
What's that, the line that went up or her garage door? Or her, her, um, gate?
Again, that I don't know.
Alright, well, that'd be a phone call to Jimmy. Because if anybody would know who Jimmy was, or Ellen.
Right.
Um, but after seeing what I saw, if it comes out, great. If it doesn't come out, great, it's a dead wire. One blade, up and down, it's done.
Cutting that saw?
Cutting that tree with a saw, that's not a problem.
You got chainsaws.
Do we have any liability if somebody gets hurt on that? Because I went up there again, and it's a low bar, because I am not super well-coordinated. But I almost laid it down. Same thing happened on a flat service today, but like, do we have any liability? I did press it, but you know, like, just do we have any liability if somebody gets?
Well.
No more so than anywhere else.
Well, yes and no. One of the things, we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. You get liability if somebody falls from the stairs out here.
Right.
But if the city is going to make a conscious decision based on allocation of resources to maintain this as a minimum maintenance trail. I'm not saying you should or you shouldn't. I would want to make sure that we try to get some discretionary immunity. So what we do is we probably come back to the council with a full resolution, saying that's what you're gonna do, and saying this is the minimum amount of maintenance we're going to do. This is what it is, and we've made a conscious value decision. That's the council exercising its discretion, and it would likely trigger what's known as discretionary immunity if somebody gets hurt in there. That doesn't mean they're not gonna make a claim, that doesn't mean they're not gonna come to the city screaming, yelling, doing whatever, but it means the league's probably gonna be able to get out of it paying little or nothing.
Okay. I agree, I think it's a beautiful trail. I had never walked it before. I think it would be disappointing if we weren't able to use it. I think the community would be really disappointed, it's a beautiful piece. Um, I guess from my definition of minimum maintenance means foot traffic only, so no bikes, motorized vehicles. I would want people to stay on the trail because there's some drop-offs and things like that. I wouldn't want the city to be liable for installing fencing, or I, I don't know, right? Right? And that it's.
Every 12-year-old boy is gonna be all over that property for the next hundred years.
I know.
And it's just an attractive nuisance.
Totally.
We can't, we can't worry about that.
But there's still many trails where people are gonna go off and do.
Totally.
And I don't think we can say no bikes on trails.
Yeah, we can, can't we?
Can we what?
Yes, you do.
Say no bikes on trails?
Absolutely, and impose whatever requirements you want.
Yeah. But who's, I mean, if a bunch of teenagers on the hill, they might be going up and down that and making it a jerk bike track and creating more erosion issues and things we've gotta fix for foot traffic. I don't know.
Well, you know, the second, no bikes on the trail.
Right.
Sign up.
Exactly.
They're gonna go up there with their big white tire on their bikes and go play around.
And people will eventually take the path of least resistance, so if it's chunky and not great over here.
Oh, sure.
They're gonna trample it down on this one.
Totally understand. I'm just trying to think of cost to maintain, right? Because I know we had a significant rainy year this year that caused erosion, right? And what if this happens again in the next five years? We're gonna have to spend some money, probably dealing with grading, possibly replacing a culvert. You know, I just wouldn't want additional traffic, or I don't know.
My thought is that, since, I, I know that older culvert is there, you're talking about the one that's right off of Broadway, right?
No.
Well, farther out.
Okay.
It's kind of exposed.
But if we're not driving on it any longer, I mean, they're not, there's no snow plowing happening in the wintertime. There's no, you know, you're not maintaining that trail. Occasionally, a city vehicle might go up and down it, but I mean, those big weight restrictions are not, or big weight amounts are not gonna be driving over that.
Maybe that's the definition of minimum maintenance I'm looking for, like, just no motorized traffic to cause extra weight load on the trail. I don't know.
Right, I agree with no four-wheelers, but that's the case for a trail in our city. Um, I, talking about minimum maintenance, what does that mean? Literally, what are we talking?
You're asking?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, and I guess I, that would, what we wanna find out from the councils, what, you know, if you saw it in that condition, we'd have some erosion stuff we'd have to take care of just because of the MS4 polluting the stream and stuff like that. We gotta hold those banks back and fix those things. But as far as the passibility of the trail, if everybody was cool with the way it was today, then we wouldn't have to do nothing. If we wanted to continue to grade it and maintain it, then we have to do some other things if we wanna haul rock on it.
Like what?
Well, we have to run a skid steer up and down, but we can only go one way with, with traffic on it. So to get a tandem dump truck with rock up there is near impossible. You know, so you're talking about one, you know, one-ton truck loads up and down trying to put rock on it. Because you can only go one direction, you can't drive all the way through. Like on some trails, you can take a big truck through, you can drive through it, you can open up the back, you can kind of spread your rock through it. Here, you're gonna make piles and take up buckets.
The likelihood of that happening is maybe once a year?
Again, I'm asking, I, I have no.
You don't agree, yeah.
So what's your guys' expectation would be? What I'm asking is, what you walked, walked on now, is that acceptable? You know, um, for a trail? If it is, then it sets that bar of what we're thinking that we'd have to maintain. Again, I'm just asking, because I, I don't know what you guys would want.
Maybe blade it once a year.
Yeah. And then obstructions, obviously, if, you know.
If another tree.
And, yeah.
Does, who's the developer there, is it DR?
Yep.
Does DR Horton have to get it up to a certain standard before it's released? And then we can kind of determine what level we wanna keep it at going forward from that point?
Uh, through the process, we determined with DR that they would be adding some fill on the site. We, I don't know if we ever set the specific quantity, but we didn't anticipate this amount would be needed. So I would say DR giving us the amount to fix some of the sites at this point would be tricky.
But for, I mean, the, the smaller, I don't, we'll call them, I don't know if rocks is the right word, but they're kind of, where you would walk. I mean, that, in the center, that can, there can be an expectation that that gets reworked in.
There's about a 50-foot stretch that if you just ran a blade up, you're gonna knock that down and split the difference, it's gonna be fine.
Well, a lot of the rock that, that's creating some of that is actually larger stone that Ellen had put in on those ditches that washed out. So there's a lot of larger cobblestones in there, there's actually stuff that's been displaced from the ditch lines that were in there. So just running a blade on there, you're just gonna make ridges and piles on the other side of it. So some of that stuff you gotta clear off the other side when you start working with some of that bigger rock. But, um, we're on with skid steer up and down, you'll have a, you'll have a half-day worth of work up and down there.
What you just said, you said it's gonna go off to the side.
Yep.
What, do we care?
It just creates another ridge, so it depends on, you can get it pushed up.
I mean, how, what's the width when you say it goes off to the side? Like, is it 10 feet across?
Well, we have, we have a six-foot bucket.
Six-foot bucket. Gotcha.
And then, there's a bunch of rock at the top, making it kind of impassable, what, that's gonna get moved soon? Snowmobiles be allowed?
No.
Okay. I thought that was already coming with most trails in the city, right?
Other than Sixth Street?
Other than, yeah.
Okay. They just wouldn't have anywhere, once they got to the top, that's part of our interior residential trail system.
Got it.
They could go up and down a bunch of times.
But Sixth Street was part of just trying to have a snowmobile row in and out of town.
Yeah, yeah.
That part, it's hard.
Okay. Okay.
Has Parks Commission asked anything about turning it into a sledding hill?
A little challenging with all the trees.
Yeah, it'd be a little challenging with all the, you know, I wanna see a sledding hill. You know.
Yep. That'd be a little challenging for all the trees.
And if there's going to be maybe a few other spots on this site, that could be a sledding hill, I don't think this is it. I personally wouldn't put a child down it.
I wouldn't.
Not with the turds.
It's gonna be more a child.
If you wanted to let it down it, I have it. You're an adult, you can bring it here.
Okay. So I think, do you have a work in you?
Yep.
What? You should probably, you should prepare a resolution for the council outlining what the restrictions are and just state that the council's making an economic choice to keep this as a minimum maintenance trail. That'll get you the discretionary immunity. And obviously, any dollars that the city expends of this are general fund dollars. I can't use park dedication to repair or maintain a trail. The other thing I wanna warn you, because it's an issue that I'm seeing in other communities, I don't know if warn is the right word, but it's kind of unique given this parcel. At some point in time, you're probably gonna get approached by people who want to put in a mountain bike trail. I've got that going on in a couple of other communities, and it's, it's a push-pull, it's a serious recreational amenity, and as you know, it makes people like me nervous.
Larry, there's a lot of these in New York.
Going up and down the stairs every now and then.
Okay.
So not it.
Of course.
Is that under a plan?
No, since it's largely a maintenance item. So park dedication.
Yeah, we can't use park dedication.
We can't create a new mountain bike trail.
Oh.
Oh, if we wanted to do, I mean, that would have to be, that would, first of all, it'd have to be scoped in the park study, you'd have to go through the whole determination. If, if that would be a new amenity, separate and distinct from this, and if you did it and scoped it in your park study, you could do it, you could absolutely do it. Be careful about that. Wait, you know, my advice would be to wait until you see where the demand is, and this may or may not be the right location.
So if this, I'm sorry.
The funny part.
So if technically this isn't a trail right now, this is a driveway, so when you're talking about park dead, it would actually be a new, let's just.
You've already taken it as a trail, you've got a paper trail, you've got a track of documents a mile long that says, we're taking this for trail purposes as a minimum maintenance trail. You can't use park dead dollars for this, this is, this is O and M. Um, and I think that that's prohibited by 461.
Just prohibited, perfect.
Okay, would that, uh, good segue, should we go to the Parks Master Plan?
Yes, let's. So this is a, it is a good segue to the Parks Master Plan. But the Parks Commission has been working on for about nine months collectively as a group. So you have the full document that supports some drawings that we discussed as a group. I blanked putting the drawings in the packet, so I'm gonna upload them to the website tomorrow if anyone would like to check them out. But I feel confident that we've talked through it at least as a group. So in the Parks Master Plan, there is existing conditions, which draws information from the comp plan, demographic data, things we know about the community right now. Parks needs, so the Parks Commission came up with a really long laundry list of things that they wanted to see in the parks, and those are some of the things that we programmed into the pretty drawings that Bolt and Mike put together for us. We got some data from the Design Carver survey, some specific questions about parks, some new trends. Learned about this new game called Gaga Ball recently.
You fully Google it now?
Yeah. Yeah. So there's new park, new trends in parks that are popping up all the time. Feels like kids are getting a little more creative, which is fun. So Parks Master Plan also lays out park dedication, so tells us how we can spend our money, where specifically we can go, cite some state statute of why we can't spend it elsewhere. And then determining the nexus is the big thing where it starts to set. Park dollars to the park projects, which then in turn determines the park dedication fee. So let's do a quick once-over of what park dedication is. So anytime a project is planted, park dedication is required. It can be either in land or cash in lieu of land. It's often on a tiered basis for the type of development, so residential and commercial have different requirements for the type or for the amount of dedication that's required. Funds can only be used for new parks and trails, operations and maintenance is not an option. And again, can't be used for maintenance. Um, so the parks that are considered in the Parks Master Plan, there's a community park south of town, the Gaystock Lake area, Mueller's Pit redevelopment, downtown park, former wastewater site. There's a growth area park that's contemplated, so if you think about the area that's currently west of town, you see it's a lot of single-family development. And if Ironwood and Olson Park are two of the last programmed parks that we have, kind of in the northern portion of the city, I think there's gonna be a pretty significant gap, so having some type of neighborhood park in the residential area will be important. Location to be determined, but will depend on development patterns and needs.
Similar to Olson Park, except for.
I'd say larger than that, yep. There's a green ribbon trail system that's contemplated that would wind from Ironwood Park through Timber Creek, which is the project on the Song Farm right now, and then wrap around Mueller's Pit to create about a five-mile loop, and then the JCP underpass. So if the Jonathan Carver Parkway plan update, there's a second underpass that's contemplated, and we're able to use park dedication dollars for that. So those are the major parks that are considered that could use park dedication dollars. In the plan, we also do a pretty extensive deep dive into the existing system and add some amenities to different parks. So Olson Park has been, there's a pretty substantial amount of space left for a multi-use court, so whether that be tennis, pickleball, foursquare, something that can be used by multiple groups, so it's not just a basketball court. Ironwood Park, we've been talking about a pavilion for a while. Uh, something that's interesting right now is there are large-scale outdoor games, so like ping-pong tables made out of cement that stay outside all year long, that would be rentable with a pavilion, so if you're throwing a party and you wanna use them, bean bags that are always there, those are available. Community park redevelopment, which is one of the dreamier projects that's in this plan. So baseball and softball moves to the park south of town, there's some opportunity in community park to redevelop. Gazeebo Park, we've recognized that tables might be nice in that area, just to give people a place to gather downtown. And then the JCP underpass is also considered here, split 50/50 between the two. So working into some of the plans that the Parks Commission put together along with Bolt and Mike to give us the beautiful renderings. This is the park downtown, so it contemplates a splash pad with a community pavilion area, so there's parking on one side closest to the private property owners that could be cleared out for spaces for things like a farmer's market. The Parks Commission was really interested in the food truck fest, so you pick a night in the summer and you try to get a bunch of food trucks down there. Something that we were cognizant of in this plan was thinking about the HPC, since they would additionally review this project, thinking about what's important to them. So aspects that are in the park, the water tower, obviously. The bridge that spans closer to the parking mimics the Trestle Bridge. Boulders that are in the shallow holding ponds where kids are able to play would mimic the Carver Rapids. And then the tugboat remains, so some nods to where Carver has been, but also creates a new project, a new community gathering space. Something else to note, this project would be lit at night, so great during the day when you have kids, but also a cool art installation at night.
Would they put lights in the boat?
We could.
Where'd Steve O'Willoughby go?
He's in there somewhere.
Okay. Just ask.
The second park.
When we are talking about lighting, there's gonna be two, I guess, two properties that might notice it being lit. I can't think of how lit it is down there right now. I mean, obviously, you know it has to meet a particular requirement, I'm telling you all the things already know, but, um, where do you propose the lighting to be, in the fountain or all over the park?
So it's mostly around the splash pad where you can see there's kind of white glue circles around the splash pad portion. There's little dots in here which are probably a little tricky to see. I would say with the amount of trees that are proposed and then being common, but it's also in a semi-residential area, it wouldn't be lit up to the point where it's offensive by any means, so.
I feel like the light is mostly lower to the ground.
Right.
Right, it's not streetlights shining down.
Okay. Other questions about this one specifically?
I love it.
I love it, the feedback that I shared with Erin when we were going over it one-on-one was the changing rooms in the pavilion. I thought that it would make more sense to have a bathroom facility in there. Yeah, if you have little people, they can change just about anywhere, and I don't think we need a specialty area for changing. Restrooms maybe you need though in that area.
And then, Kristi gave me some good feedback about the structure, making it look a bit more historical. The HPC is generally pretty supportive of a black asphalt architecturalistic type shingle, so changing potentially the roof and then making it look a little less modern with the wood features that are there.
This would be another area too where we could see if we can get some of those grants again for those historic kiosks and those into that slot too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So up on the levee, you can see there's an overlook, so if you look at the bottom of the page, and we do have space for a couple of kiosks there too, but also information to get people downtown. So the business alliance looked at this this past Friday. They often talk about some type of directional sign that says, "Business is open these weekends of the month." Come on down, so that could be a spot for it.
It's fantastic.
Really cool.
So the second park that's contemplated with the visual is the park south of town. So the Parks Commission has been looking for a space that could have several fields that could facilitate tournament play. So this property is off Maplewood and Jonathan Carver Parkway in the township right now. It's currently owned by Summer Gate, which is the developer who owns a pretty significant amount of property. They bought it right before the 2008 crash, and in a sense, it sat pretty dormant. So they aren't interested in really partnering at this time, should we choose to move forward with this park in the future. So this park contemplates two different locations. The first is owned by Summer Gate, the second is a private property owner who we haven't engaged with, so it's faded out a bit. Not, yep, not definitely happening, but could in the future with the amount of land that's left. So you'll see at full build-up, there is an option for six fields here, three on the original piece, three on the third. The third one is hatched out south of the other two. This park also has a natural playground, which the Parks Commission has been advocating for, a more traditional playground, a community fire pit, some courts, whether that be again tennis, pickleball, some new game that we don't know about yet. There's a pretty extensive trail system throughout too. The Parks Commission was excited about that in case you're down there six nights a week and you are sick of watching your child play mediocre baseball, that you could go and get a nice ball, we can, if you needed a break. The parking is also phased, so day one, we obviously wouldn't need this amount of parking, so it's phased in different spots and locations. Two of the fields are lit here, so the stadium field and then the one directly next to it, so two could allow for later stadium play.
Did I say an estimate in there for the price of the letting?
Yes.
It looked low.
Okay.
Extremely low.
Um, so this park, obviously, we would need to do land acquisition, would be step one. Step two would be starting to do some landscaping, so by the time we get down there, some of the trees would hopefully be mature, and it wouldn't be just a barren site that's generally flat right now. We also would probably enter this with a purchase agreement, so we wouldn't acquire the entire property at once, just because there's a pretty hefty price tag that comes along with this. The piece here is roughly 35 acres.
And a bunch of acre.
We don't know, it'll depend on when we choose to buy it.
Are those water features there now, or are they gonna be?
Field.
They'd be added.
It's a bean field.
I know there's any more she's about to run.
As there are, we definitely could rearrange the site a little bit, just if we know there's a wet spot, to try not to convert it to something else when we need.
And then fight it forever, yeah.
Brian's got twice that going in.
Is that the right term? The wet spots? So that's the large park that's south of town. Are there questions, feedback?
I know we talked about, you know, there's not a lot of building on this particular property, and if at some point in time the city of Carver's looking at maybe putting a library or something like that in, this might be a good location, considering its location right off of Jonathan Carver Parkway. Um, for those people who, again, don't wanna watch their kids play mediocre baseball, just something else. I don't know, I mean, it's a, it's a really nice piece of property there, might be something we could fit in the future. Just a thought. And we got a lot of parking there.
My only comment on this one was the community fire pit.
Yeah.
Freaks me out. Literally, maybe Larry's state's prohibited by.
I've seen, I've seen it drawn for the first time.
Yeah. I don't, there's something about inviting people into the public space to light a fire that scares me just a little bit, especially when maybe you don't have a water source, you don't mind house, I don't get that.
There's always a Sunday.
How are you putting that from the pond to the fire? So anyway, that is my comment, is that a fire pit is maybe not my favorite part of this plan, but I can be swayed depending on other people's feelings about it.
This would be another great place for a food truck event, just thinking about the parking.
Yeah. And then the third and final drawing that we have contemplates redevelopment of the wastewater treatment site. So there's a couple of tweaks that I'd like to work through with Bolt and Mike that I've talked about with this group and also the Parks Commission. The site contemplates a yardway site, which Brent has been working on, so about an acre would be used for a yardway site, so people could do their lawn work, bring it down to the city, do a compostage, check it. Next is the public works storage area, which they're using the site for right now, so we went entirely, kicked them out, we've left them a little bit of space. And then there are two dog park areas that are contemplated, one for larger dogs, one for smaller.
They both look pretty small.
One of the ideas that this group, as was the Parks Commission, had shared is potentially removing the turnaround that's in the parking and expanding both of the dog parks. I don't think it's super necessary to have that much concrete in that area. Also, a few of you have mentioned that the amount of parking feels a little bit excessive for what the use is, so it's 68 stalls right now, I don't think we hit capacity there very often.
See, and I, on the other hand, my comment, I'm sorry, I mean ahead of you, but with the trail, the trail should lead from there through that outlawed and up to connect with the Bluffs.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, and then, since we have, I don't know, as we grow with regional trails coming through and other trails possibly coming through, we've got the one on.
People might park there and just go.
They might drop there and park there, and if you are going to.
Maybe a tree head place.
And dog heads are, or dog heads, trailhead, dog, dog parks, trailhead to dog parks, let's start that over. Dog parks get a lot of people, I mean, they're really popular. And then when you've got Frisbee Gulf, I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm great with taking that turnaround out, I think it's wasted space. Um, I'm, I'm super comfortable with the number of spots, I think they're gonna use a lot more, and I'd rather have it than to try and, it'd have been somewhere later.
Yeah, I.
It's on the parking.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree on the trail piece, because we need a connection up to Bluff Park, and, you know, eventually, hopefully, the DNR does something with that trail that's even lower than minimum maintenance. But anyway, hopefully, because then you can connect all the way into downtown Carver. But the other piece I mentioned to Erin was I know that that creek is also contaminated, so it'd be really great if we did a cleanup of that creek.
What's creek?
Carver Creek. What do you mean by, yeah? I don't know, from all of the studies I've seen, the one we do our comp plan from DNR or whatever on the water quality, those are all really polluted from farm runoff.
Any stream.
Not any, thank you.
Thank you for the backup on that. I know I've read that over the years in part of planning commission, and I've always been like.
I'd like to learn more about that, maybe the future work session, or like, you know.
I've, I've thought about trying to motivate my homeowners association and the Bluffs to like, get together and let's clean up the creek, you know, or something, I don't know.
Does that run by the pit, is any of the pit coming back?
No, no, it bypasses.
Oh, she's maybe saying.
It bypasses the pit.
Bypasses the pit, I think it's mostly farm that's.
So is it chemical or like physical garbage debris?
Like agriculture runoff.
Okay.
The upper-left corner, when you turn off JCP in there, where those four trees are, I think that would be a great place for some parking spots instead of green space, because we're gonna have this whole Frisbee Gulf area. That bridge in there, that bridge I saw priced at $100,000. That's about six times lower than what it will probably cost to do it.
What's that, I mean, it depends on the span, I mean, we, we, you could buy, you could buy the small, the small bridges.
I think at this point, we're just approving the concept.
Yeah.
And maybe the price tag on this, so I think.
I mean, you're right, I mean, they can go much higher. I mean, you're right. I mean, they can go much higher. I mean, I'll, I'll give you that.
Because I know when we, when we were talking about potential city hall, just a bridge from Old Forty Inn to that space was like one point three million dollars.
That was for your particular traffic.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
But again, less. This bridge, this bridge over here was ballpark seven hundred fifty thousand.
That's also for vehicles, for snowfalling. But let's just focus more on feedback on the concept versus kind of debating the price tags on this. Um, I thought, I, I love the idea of the trail from JCP connecting and going all the way in through downtown. Um, I thought that the parking felt a little bit heavy, but that's not something that's gonna keep me awake at night. Um, I love the option for the yard waste site. I know that going away with the county that that's a big deal. Um, just some feedback on it. I would love it if we could call this something other than the wastewater site. Because.
Why have another term, but I don't just do that.
No, you can't call it, you can't call it poo park. So I don't know if this becomes a city-owned parcel, but. Throughout the Parks Commission, I would love to strike that and come up with something else because that's just icky. Um, but I like it.
With the, speaking of icky, um, yard waste, so is that going to stink?
So our concept was not actually the compost on site would be to actually collect the yard waste and then truck it out to either Hutchinson or to Shakopee. And then what we do is bring product back that's already composted. So we eliminate that whole process.
Okay.
This is kind of our quick look at it is going, we don't want to get into turning piles and creating that over.
Right, okay. Good, because if we want to talk about names and what things will become.
Oh, yes.
Well, and then that reduces, our amendment lives in there, right, and all of the.
So we'd have a bunker. Once it fill up, we'd haul it, we'd haul it out is what we were proposing to do.
I have a question on then like the roadway. Would you be able to, like at the top of the Public Works, drive in through there and drive out the other end? Or like if somebody came with a truck and trailer, would you have room to turn around? Or would you enter exit at two different places?
I think it'd be something, once you got into the kind of really laying out, getting into the weeds with it, I think that's where you start determining, you know, for having rock piles and stuff there, you know, what does the council feel as far as people stopping and grabbing a fire, you don't pay a rock or not? So they close off our area, just kind of keep them onto that side. And those are all kind of pieces of our tweeting talks and get around it at that time.
But yeah, I'd give up parking spots for that, but just have more of a flow for an entry exit.
Right.
But it backs up partially. It does back up underneath the Carver Bluffs Parkway.
But I think, well, I think are we all fairly in agreeance that like the turnaround there is kind of an unnecessary space and cost? If we were, because you're asking, because you're talking about you want to be moving or extending that, making the dog parks larger.
Right.
And you mean, you can't park there.
I think those have a place for when it's a popular amenity where you're gonna have a drop-off pickup. Like if you're dropping somebody off at a front door, like, you know, or if it's a lot of kids. It doesn't seem like that would be the use for this as much as a, I'll drop you off, I'll pick someone up. So I, I'm in favor of eliminating that, just having, kind of thinking what it would be used for.
And to get more space for the park part, I would be all for having that.
Yeah, I'm okay with getting rid of it too. I just think functionally, we need to figure out a way that people are gonna get back out of there where they do turn around. Is it a wide turn at the end of the parking lot, you know?
Yeah.
How we do that?
Yeah.
Um, just as long as we solve for that, I'm fine with getting rid of it.
So the text of the plan that was included in your packet largely supports the drawings that were shown tonight. So I still have some work to do. Larry gave me some really good feedback on the plan that is going to need some tweaks. The Parks Commission reviewed everything, the plan at their meeting last Monday. I'm thinking about the money a little bit as we continue moving forward. So the park dedication fee previously was three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. So it's bumping up to four thousand seventy per unit, so an increase of one hundred and fifty dollars, which is done by adding everything that's needed in the park divided by the amount of residents that are anticipated in the future. And then there's also the city contribution. So every year, the city's general fund puts in for park dedication. We came up with the number of seventeen thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars from the increase of the one hundred and fifty dollars, which is a three point seven percent increase. So we applied that same methodology to the general fund amount. So it went from sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-one to seventeen thousand five hundred and sixteen based off that same three point seven percent increase.
So when would that be effective on the, on the resident formula?
Yep, so this is part of the fee schedule, so.
Okay.
We continue plugging along and get to adoption of this plan by the end of 2019. It'd be part of the 2020 fee schedule.
Okay. So Erin, the staff member, you mentioned that the commercial industrial decreases.
Yes.
Which is strange.
That's interesting.
Yeah, so the amount of land that's considered in our 2040 plan was greater than what was considered in our 2030 plan and it's more residential. So in our 2030 plan, since the area was smaller, commercial was more concentrated. So it took out more of the future space of the city where now residential is pulling more because our future land use map has more residential than it historically has. So again, it's based off the same formula, so that's what makes it kind of tricky. It wasn't just an arbitrary decision.
Right.
It's how the math shook out.
Okay.
So we're going to continue editing some feedback from the Parks Commission, feedback from you, feedback from Larry, feedback from everyone, so.
It's square HPC.
And so this plan will likely be just an FYI for them until we start talking about the park as something that might happen in the future.
Okay.
But then it will start early to get some feedback or see if there's major changes.
Okay.
So the goal is to have this adapted again by the end of 2019, so it can be part of the 2020 fee schedule. So we'll continue plugging along, anticipate seeing it in a draft. Courtney had the idea of potentially having someone from the Parks Commission at the next meeting when we talk about it, just to talk through some methodology, how the group got there. If you have specific questions for them, that may be a good resource for this group to have.
I would just love to see them kind of present it. We did pretty much zero work on this. So for them to get credit and to hear our feedback and discussion on it as we're going through it, I thought that would be cool to kind of draw the two groups together and make it more collaborative.
I'd fight the other way. Well, if that's, if you want them to come great. They did such a great job. I, you know, it's, it's so good. It's so good. So.
And that is what I think would be great for them here.
Yeah.
So if they can make it great, I'd love to have them, but it's not like a, you're in trouble, come down. It's a see all kind of thing by any means.
And if, any of you would like to start sharing some of these prettier images, I'm gonna put them on the city's website tomorrow. I'll send you all the link, just so you can hit your networks to say, "Working on some cool stuff" instead of all the bummer budget.
Will you change the name on that map first?
Um, yeah, I can try. I'll have to think of something great.
When was the last time that we calculated this formula for park dedication?
Uh, twenty, 2009 or 2010 was the last time the study was updated.
Wow, okay.
It's been a while. You have to do a park plan every ten years. It's part of your comprehensive plan, so.
So it's time.
I mean, you could do it more frequently.
Well, yeah, it's a lot of work. Okay, I was just curious.
All right, any feedback? Who wants, all right, what is it?
That is me.
It's number four, the Jonathan Carver Parkway Stormwater.
Well.
Who just said they love stormwater? Okay.
Well, to kick this off, I'll just break the news to you. This is definitely a lot less exciting. So a big concrete pipe from the ground, a pond that would get bigger. So that's about the extent of the presentation here is, you've seen, you've seen this all before, is we've been looking for an outlet for, for the developer's stormwater and the county also is gonna be needing an outlet for County Road 11 stormwater. So it ended up going down the path of a collaborative effort that the county has been trying to spearhead to see if there's some joint opportunities. And ultimately, the study was completed to try and evaluate different, different avenues to try and combine the city and the county stormwater into one joint, joint discharge. And so the study was done, I got a bunch of different options. I think, I believe all of you have seen some of these before. We've talked a little bit about the park. What I'm really coming back to do is talk about the reality that at this point, through all the alternative analysis and all the, all the review and the county's evaluation of the options, this is the leading option. And so this, this is less presentation, more open discussion, to be honest with you, about what your reaction to this would be. The county's preference as it stands right now would be to, to proceed this route. That being said, this is one hundred percent a concurrence request. So the, the city would have to approve of this. It would have to concur. It would have to effectively dedicate easements, whatever the case might be, enter into agreements with the county on a joint, a joint ponding facility. So there's a tremendous amount of, of approval hanging on their request to proceed in this direction. And that's really what we'd be here to talk about. The alternative route that would be considered, you know, a viable alternative would be to go down County Road 11 and discharge through county property, in which case that would extend, extend the length of the impacts down 11. A fair, a fair distance here and that's one of the reasons why this one was considered to be a lower cost alternative is it doesn't, doesn't require this pipe to go all the way down 11 for extended distance. And this one also lines up better with permitting requirements such that they can meet their rate control and try and do some of the treatment in a consolidated location as opposed to the other, the other options up near this park and ice arena. They'd have to do some rain gardens and things to that nature. So this kind of puts it all into one spot and ultimately, that's why it's leading the, leading the charge as far as the preferred options. So ultimately, I'm here to say, "What's your reaction to this?" And understanding that next steps would be a discussion with the park commission, ask, ask what their take on this would be. And then furthermore, in November, probably the second meeting in November or, you know, soon after as, as it would need to be scheduled, would be a concurrence request to the city council to approve this as a joint solution for County Road 11 because the plans would really hinge on that approval. So is there, can you?
Can I, can I read this drawing back to you and see if I understand it?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. The red line is new.
The red line is the new, new pipe, yes.
New pipe. So we're gonna have to dig all that up and put a pipe in the ground.
Yes, and, and on 11, you're seeing orange pipe.
Yes.
That is, that is not pipe that's in the ground yet, but it would be with the County Road 11 project. So the red pipe is kind of the, the route in question, I would say. But it would be new pipe, yes.
Would it be done at the same time?
It could be or it could be done earlier.
Okay.
So.
And then the light blue shaded in is new, Stormwater, what do you call it? New basin.
Yes, yep, yep.
New basin.
Yep, you got it.
What, what is in that property today? All I see is trail and some people's backyards. Is that all easement and stuff like that or? There's a wetland, okay.
But it's rather small. It maybe goes in two backyards.
Okay. Is it gonna take out anything other than trail?
Well, Brian, is there anything that we're missing here? I believe it's largely just open grass area, at least according to what we've seen on the channel there.
At one time before, Iron would park a few times. I think they use it for soccer, but that was before Iron would park.
And then they use it for T-ball.
For T-ball. They, they use it for, got it, T-ball and it used to be used for soccer.
Okay. So then red line is continued. So we're gonna have to rip up, I'm not sure what street. High Street, underneath there. And then we're gonna leverage existing, the hashed basin.
Existing basin, yeah.
Okay, and then red line down the bluff.
Down the bluff and that is a, that's a private property, so an easement would be required.
Okay, so there'll be easement through that property. Is there anything that we're impacting on that property other than easement?
No.
Do we think?
No, it's, it's largely down the bluff and it's, it's following largely the corridor of the transmission line. And so we were actually deliberately trying to follow that.
Follow that line so that there would be less disruption to the.
To the property.
At the property.
Because they're not gonna be able to do anything under that transmission line anyway.
That's my question.
But a pipe could be put there.
Okay.
Where's Gazebo Park? Or.
In downtown?
No, no, no.
You mean Overlook Park.
Overlook, overlook. With the gazebo.
Probably for the, almost where the folder icon is, a little further down.
That's where.
Yeah. There it is.
Right there.
Right next to the white box.
To the right of the white box.
Yep.
I know where that transmission line is. Thank you. That was what I needed.
That's right, that's the road.
So Dan, for the park basin, is that blue outline the high water mark?
The, the blue represents kind of the limits of the park development area. The contours would be somewhere in, inside of that where the high water would be. So no, they, they, they get a little bit generalized to say, "Here's the overall footprint of the area of impact."
Okay.
So I would say that's kind of the tie-down limits of the pond and not the high water. It would be smaller.
Tell me tie-down versus.
Tie-down would be like the, the, where the slope grading stops.
Okay, okay.
And then the pond waters somewhere down here. And so he, he takes the very outline of where you would have to, you know, take the pond and then the water goes down.
Because just looking at this, that looks like.
Yeah, that would be, that would be a bit, bit much as far as property lines and such. I mean, the, the high water would be inside of that.
Okay. To the extent of half the size of this?
Um, I would say I'd probably take fifteen feet around the whole thing at least, you know, fifteen to twenty feet minimum. We'd have to get into detailed contours to actually show the exact pond shape and the exact bounds. Didn't take it that far at this point, but yeah, it would be a ways off the property line for the water.
Okay. And what kind of notice would we give to those folks?
Well, that would be some next steps. If, if it was something that we consider this to be a viable, viable route to continue proceeding down this path, probably some notice to the residents. I know Brent was specific about, let's try and get, get something out to those that would be impacted around the area.
Okay.
And then take that information in, into Parks Commission possibly and then ultimately into the, you know, any approval or rejection process, I guess.
Okay.
Um, so that would be a, a next step.
And what's the cost share for this?
The cost share would have to be determined with the county because this is a little, a little fuzzy as to how, how policy would work with the county because most of the time it's very, very cut and dry. Cost participation policy would be by contributing area or by contributing flow. And so if the county road was, for example, contributing eighty percent of the water to a pipe and the city property was contributing twenty percent, it would just be straight up eighty-twenty. That's, that's how that would play out. That's how the County Road 11 project would, would play out by policy and would still apply to that project. This has taken water, a very large area of development water that's off property into the County Road 11 corridor and discharging it in the same pipe. The flows don't even line up at the same time, so there's some complicating elements of that such that it may not be a fair reflection of what's actually happening here to take that because then it might sway things way towards the city side, side of the costs. To say if it's by contributing flow, the city might end up being higher sixty, forty, for example, when that doesn't necessarily make all, all the sense in the world here. And so we have to try and take the county's base policy and maybe consider, should there be an oversizing expense, for example, for what would normally have to have been built? And then say, "What's the additional cost that would be associated with, with combining flows?" Because in, in another scenario, you could easily have built a county road pipe and a city pipe in two different directions and they would have been completely separate. And so I, I wish I could answer the question, but I'd say it still has to be worked out and they have to recur with that methodology, so.
And the cost share, whatever that percentage will eventually be, would be the same for this option or that other option down County Road 11 that you mentioned?
It would be identical, yeah. So the, the cost, or cost splits would end up being, were built the same just because it's the same situation. The pond is a hundred percent, the pond is a contributing, well, I will say that's different than the pipe.
With this, with this one going through and discharging over here has a lot more impact on the residents than it does staying on Jonathan Carver Parkway, correct?
Yeah, and it's definitely closer.
If you're using a formula with, where X percentage of it is from our residents and a city flow, the natural, it would be a lot less money for us going down Jonathan Carver Parkway, wouldn't it?
Um, the, the pond itself is different than the pipe. That's why this gets a little bit hairy as to how you'd actually split the cost. The pond is only associated with County Road 11 water. The only reason you, you would. The only reason you, you wouldn't even dig the pond for the development water, because that's already been treated, and there's, there's things that are being done in the development to handle that. All you need is the pipe. So the, the pond would be specifically associated with County Road 11, and those costs would be split in either direction. If you're going down, uh, the county road, there'd still be some expenses going down that hill, and they'd try and dig a small pond in there, so. But you're, you're right, that, that is a, that would be a split cost.
So this is the preferred route by the county? What's in it for us?
Um, what's in it for you? It's, it's a request that's being handled to join water, to join the development water and the county road water, and ultimately, it's a preferred permitting alternative, such that WMO is gonna look at this and say, it's, you know, more favorable for rate control, for water quality, for treatment and such. It's hard for me to say what's in it for you, it's a joint project. I mean, that's, that's the answer to the question, it's, you're both in this together, to be honest with you. So County Road 11 and the city, you're, you're gonna be in a JPA on this, and I'd say the solutions should be jointly concurrent, but if you don't concur, they're, they're gonna have to respect that.
I have a question. Are the map up here? I'll follow this. So these homes right behind Gilfillan here, not the park, but the other side, on the other side of 4th Street Hill, is that gonna look basically the same once that pipe goes in? I mean, will the ground go back and it's gonna look basically like it did before?
You mean in the basin area?
Yeah.
Is there gonna be more water?
That's Allen Drive?
The new pond?
Hold on, so we're here in the big pond, and as we travel across 4th Street...
Yeah, there's a discharge into that.
Yeah. Okay, so that is...
It's no piping in there, that's just, just the water traveling through there to the other side.
And there's no water there now?
Yeah, it's largely dry, you'd know about it.
Pretty well dry now, yeah.
Not today, but yeah.
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 Pastures, it has been dry.
So there wouldn't be anything expanded or done to that? It would just remain as an existing size, just with another pipe coming to it?
At this point, it's just discharging more water into it, and then it's taking it on the other side, taking it back home.
Okay. It's not getting bigger or anything like that? Not annoying thing about this?
No, not at this point.
Is there a pipe solution to the ponds? I noticed that it goes down from 42 inches on one side, on the west side of the new pond, to 30.
30 inches?
30.
Yeah.
Can we, I can't imagine that the folks whose backyards back up to that would be super thrilled to have a huge pond in their backyard. So is there a way around that for piping? Is that part of the treatment?
Isn't it cactiles out?
The ponding...
There's some, but it's not that large by any extent.
There is, there is a pond there. You can see like the, the, the north half of that is kind of an existing smaller pond, so this would be, you know, to a degree, considered a pond expansion. But I guess to answer your question directly, the pond is sized to accommodate the rules for rate control for County Road 11. And so it's, it is the retention area to try and hold rates to the previous condition, you know, before the roadway would be built. So the, the alternatives to actually doing an open pond are below-grade storage. That's where you get into tanks and things, and that was actually one of the things that was considered in the alternatives.
Sounds expensive.
It is, exactly, that's exactly what came out of that, it's very expensive, so.
Okay.
And, yeah, so ultimately, this was compared against the others, and this was one of the lower-cost alternatives, so.
That 4th Street basin all within existing D and U easements?
Yeah, yeah, so.
So is it fair to say that this, well, being the lower cost, has more impact on anything residential or, than if we went the other way? Because the other way, we're bypassing most homes, right? Because we're running it straight down and then went through the county property behind the apartments, the white apartments. So...
When I just continue down John and the Curb Parkway, and now I end back there?
What is our...
It's all gonna go into the curcan, right?
Yeah.
What's the considered cost savings again?
When we originally did this, it was, it was a couple, about $200,000, and, and when I talk about these numbers...
That's the savings?
$200,000 on, you know, a million dollars, I mean, it was, it was a lot, it was, they were big numbers. They were planning level numbers, and so, you know, you, once you get into the actual, exact details and, you know, of exact restoration and, and bid numbers, I mean, they come down. But that's just for the purposes of comparisons, going down County Road 11 was, was about $200,000 more, approximately. The reasoning for that was, if you go down 11 and you have more restoration associated with County Road 11 work, that gets into the actual roadway, and the costs of the roadway get fairly, you know, expensive, tacked onto that alternative. And so those roadway costs almost have to be considered as part of the impacts of putting the pipe in. And so one of the things that we had to factor on this is, if the limits of, of JCP were to go way down to the south end of this pipe, you take all that restoration out of there, and you have almost the equivalent as far as pipe between the two of these. So let's just say if you already, if you already had all that roadway ripped up for a JCP project, we're not factoring that into the expense. If those limits stop just south of the roundabout, Sixth Street, and then going down, I'll go down County Road 11, ends up impacting more highway, suddenly, that's a direct expense associated with that route. Does that make sense to you? Where you don't have that expense of pavement or shoulders when you go through the park. And so that's what tilted this in the direction of more, more cost-effective, is to go through grass as opposed to the roadway. And right now, the county is exploring, you know, potentially pulling their routes out and their, their limits up as far as possible, which I believe is one of the reasons why they're thinking that this would be the most cost-effective way to go. In, in their, their view, it was very simple. What's the cheapest way to get the pipe in the ground? As simple as that. And so that's, that was their initial gut reaction, now what's the way to, to get this done, so.
So if we're, if, if this happens, where this pond expands here, and we're getting closer to homes, do we have to worry about water infiltration when it comes to like ground, like basements being wetter, things like that happening? Or is, I mean, how comfortably, it's just gonna fill up and run out from there, and it's not gonna do that?
Well, we, we typically do not see those types of issues. I mean, I mean, there's, there's, I like, I like to disclaim, you know, some of this, you can never say never. There can be weird circumstances, you get into drain tiles, or you get into a sand seam or something like that. But for the most part, if it's sandy soil and you dig a pond, and it's gonna go down, it's not gonna saturate out into the, into the basements. And if it's clay, it doesn't go anywhere except out the element pipe. And so, Brian, we're largely into like a silty sand in this area.
Yeah, that whole area, or the pond across there obviously isn't a whole lot of water, and that area is, there's sand from that area, so we really don't know until we do soil borers, to see what we're gonna have for material there, but...
Yeah, so what happens is generally, if it infiltrates, it's gonna be infiltrating down, and it's did, you're not gonna be seeing like increases in the groundwater table, for example. Most of the issues with sumps are water draining towards the house, and then they're going straight down from what we typically see, so.
Okay.
And the 30-inch discharge pipe's gonna be plenty, because you're typing in 42 into your pond?
Yeah. Yes, yeah, the 30 is the minimum discharge size after we throw out all the rains down with the pond. And so, and this does assume taking all the water that goes between the houses towards Sixth Street, down out that 30 inches, so we're taking water off of Sixth Street and redirecting it up at County Road 11 down this route as well. So there's definitely benefits to the city as far as Sixth Street's concerned, but I'll contend that that's either alternative. So we're, we're pretty intent on trying to take water off of Sixth Street because of some of the drainage issues that, that exist on that road, with how much water goes down there, so.
No.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Dan, I have a question. On the community park basin, what stops us from moving it like to the left, to going more into the current field at the park, and lessen to some of those properties' backyards? Is that an option?
Yeah, it's, it's at the city's discretion. I mean, ultimately, if, if you went this route, the city would, you know, perhaps take, take somewhat of a lead on what you would want to see done here.
I'd be more comfortable with that, taking that a little bit more of the...
Are you gonna reshape it and bring it this way?
Yeah.
You can reshape the pond, you can do different things with the trail location, but those are certainly all subject to a future approval. But once you start going down this route, I'd say the, the most reasonable thing is, is you stay down this route until it's approved, because there would be expense to even start planning in this direction. You know, things to the degree of soil boring, things to the degree of evaluation or an easement, and, and all, all the different things that come along with picking this route. It would, it would start with the design of the 11th project.
Yeah, I agree with Lori. My main concern on this is just the impact to those existing homes, and the optics of their backyards being impacted because of the new development that's going in up the hill, and I can't imagine that that would be received well. So if there's any way of pushing this, so it's less of an impact into the existing homes, backyards...
Because that's, because that's a...
Impacting more of the city property, less of the private property, you know?
Yeah, and, and we can, we can probably give you a, a better visual of that, you know, at a fairly high level, just to say this would actually be your water footprint?
That would be another, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that, that would be easier, if you drew a box around it for the most part, for ultimate limits, but we can give you, here's, here's like the, the water.
Yeah, that would be great, too.
And then ultimately, what would really prove things out is the soil boring. Go out there and say, here's the soils, this is what we expect to infiltrate, and this is the likelihood that it'd be standing water, and, you know, or if it would end up being dry, so.
But currently, that is a low spot, and there is water that could be held in there, correct?
Yeah, how's the other pond as far as water?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, it's sporadic. The one that we're gonna be expanding is kind of a sporadic pond, and it holds waters when we get a rain event, and it does what it's supposed to, it slowly releases it, so.
But it stands, it's standing throughout the year?
No, I think it's...
It goes all over the base of the pond?
Yeah, I think it drives them, or darn close.
So it's standing below there? You'd probably have to line it in order to actually keep it holding water all the time.
You're talking about the one in Community Park?
The one, if we expand it, if that's the soil type in there, we, you know... Sometimes water features can be considered in a many, you know, if, if it's, if it's a nice, nice-looking pond. If it's gonna, you know, dry out, you know, that's certainly something to tell the residents that this is what it would actually look like.
Right, I agree.
Then another question, does this concept rule out walking around the pond, or, or more just from like getting from one side of the park to the other side?
No, it would just require that...
So what happens to existing trail?
It would just require that that trail be relocated to the west. And that's part of it, is if, to do this pond, you would, if it cuts right through that pond, it would have to be moved as part of it, and that was actually factored into the impact.
Would it chop up our trail system more than it is now, or would we still be able to have a trail connectivity?
Isn't there a trail?
Yeah.
There's a trail on the south side of that?
Yep.
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, and on the north, we just move that connection, you can kind of see if it cuts through or that arrow. Yeah. Community parks.
That's where it goes right now, but this bottom one will stay. The trail that's on the bottom will stay, and then that just gets moved over.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so I think we're all okay with moving forward with this option versus going down County Road 11 at the tune of $200,000 more?
For the cost savings, yes.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna take, take away that our cost benefit is, is worth it to, you know, get into a joint agreement to use this area, that would ultimately be factored into the County Road 11. We're gonna see this again at a council meeting. This is not the, obviously, a takeaway, anything other than, than me saying this is, this is the preliminary, preliminary sense on this, and we're gonna have to do that investigation to give you the, the real, real details. Like, for example, if we came back and said, it's cheaper to go down 11, that, to me, flips your thinking. I think that, does it not?
Right, yeah.
Okay. So this is 100% very similar, it's easy for us. What's cheaper? What's the most cost-effective thing to actually get this, this all fixed?
What's less expensive?
Sure. I already wanted to say, what is, what is less expensive, okay?
And I know that we're a little ways away, but I'm also interested in what the cost sharing is, because if the cost sharing on $200,000 is 80 county, 20 city, then there may be a...
That would be good to know.
Change.
Yeah, I would like to know that, too.
Okay, all right.
What about the, you gotta acquire an easement, you're gonna need Excel's cooperation. You guys factored, you guys, the county, and you factored that into the cost between the two?
Yeah. Yeah, but an easement cost has been factored in there.
Okay.
Then you know how that works, you didn't know the cost when it's all done, but...
Until the company issue, you know, the, the arrow?
All right. Are you good? Do you know what you need from us?
That's, that's great feedback. Again, this was intended to be open discussion and dialogue, it wasn't a presentation of what has to happen. It's more get some feedback so we can kind of take it further.
Good. All right, moving on, number five, snowplow operations.
Okay, we're gonna start talking about some snowing here now, so, so we're not far away from it, so. So really, just wanted to kind of give everybody kind of an update, and, and kind of go through, how we kind of go through plowing streets when the snow starts, before it starts even, we really kind of get into that process, and then kind of what we do prior to, during, and then after, just to kind of, you guys get questions all the time, that's why isn't this plowed yet, or I can't get out here, and just kind of, kind of walk through kind of what we do, so. Really open any questions along the way, ask right away, so.
You can say it's your fault.
Here's the number.
His name's Brian.
Here's his whole number. We watch the radar and stuff before the snow even happens, so we really start watching what kind of event that comes in, and you've, with our equipment purchase, our equipment bond this year, we did get a salt brine machine for making our own salt brine. So on the bottom, bottom left there, you can kind of see where the lines are. That's the salt brine that we put down prior to a storm. And what that does, it helps with light snowfalls, if we get an icing, you know, kind of a light rain, you can kind of see in that middle one, all that pre-treatment, we call it, really kind of takes care of some of that for us, and helps that bonding issues with the snow or the ice. So cars drive over and stuff, it really helps that, so we already have that product. So the white line's on there that dries, so as soon as it rains, or it gets a little wet on top of it, it reactivates it. So that's how that kind of works all the time. So if you get too much rain, obviously, it goes away, and we gotta go back out and put regular salt down, so. So beforehand, we really kind of look at some things that really determine whether or not the pre-treatment's gonna work. We look at road temperatures, we look at what kind of temperatures are coming in on front, the front side of the storm, and then wind conditions are a big one, too. So if you imagine, you can put a salt brine down, the wind starts blowing the snow across, so what happens is it'll, it'll take that snow, it'll thaw it out, and then we'll freeze it again, so you end up with even more ice. So we really gotta watch, kind, what kind of event, what kind of snowstorm comes in. So sometimes you will see us out doing it, and sometimes you won't, and it really is kind of determining on pavement temperatures, air temperatures, and what that storm's gonna kind of come in and look like. The one big thing with the salt brine, I think we talked about when we ordered the equipment, it does reduce the amount of road salt that we use. What it does is the road salt, we do wet that down at times, too, which helps it stick to the road. But otherwise, a lot of times, you'll see, and you'll watch, if you follow a truck, when they put that rock salt down, a lot of it bounces off to the side of the road. So you're still, you're not getting that to stick to your surface, so trying to get ahead of it and try to pre-wet it is, is a big plus for us before a snow event. So during the snow event, once the snow starts falling, we have three different kind of schedules, our A, B, and C schedule. Really, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, we really maintain the roads for the emergency vehicles and for people to get home or to work, depending on what, what's going on. So we really, from 7:00 to 7:00, just try to maintain that. At 7:00 o'clock, we switch, another group comes in, or a person comes in from 7:00 to 11:00, and they really work on the emergency roads only during that period of time. At that point in time, especially if it's a bad event, most people are home, and we really just try to maintain, or that we're in contact with the fire department. There is something, we plow their ways out to wherever they happen to be, but maintain the emergency routes, and we make passes through neighborhoods just so we can get our emergency vehicles through there. At 12:00, excuse me, we have another crew that comes in, two trucks hit the road again at 12:00 AM. At that point in time, we go back in, really trying to open roads back up, so people can get ready to go to work. You know, the buses can get going, and that's, this is all still, it's still snowing out. So we may make passes through neighborhoods just to open up the roads so people can get in and out. So we do get phone calls at times that go, and well, we seen the truck drive by, so we plowed our driveway, and they came back two hours later. Well, part of it is we're not plowing curb to curb, we're just trying to maintain the streets so people can get in and out of their driveways.
I'm gonna remind my husband.
So, so it does look like we're done sometimes, but being it's still snowing, a lot of times, we're not plowing curb to curb, we're just trying to keep people moving around. Along with all that... Along with all that happening, we are maintaining the parking ride. We do the snow removal at the parking ride. So from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM, we really take care of all the sidewalks around the building, maintaining those, shoveling and plowing and salting them. And then we usually just take care of, especially in heavy snowfalls, just the first handful of parking stalls. So the first couple rows of parking stalls is all we maintain. We're not filling that parking lot at this point in time. So we're really kind of maintaining where the vehicles are or opening it up so they can get parked in there in the mornings when they're coming in for the bus routes.
Were we compensated for that?
Yep, that's part of, so all of our time and the equipment, we rent a compact loader, they pay for 50% of that. So that goes through that grant that we got for the operations grant. The other thing part of this is at 6:00 AM or so, we do get out and we have kind of the walk abilities for the school. So we really focus in on the trails right around the school area. We got a map from the school district and we kind of maintain those, the underpass, trying to get through the intersection up around some of those neighborhoods. So we really try to focus in on that during the snow event, keeping them open so kids can get home or get to school in the morning. Any questions on during the event? After the snow event, so everything kind of ends, doesn't matter what schedule we're in, A, B, or C, once that snow does, we're looking at the radar, we really start working on plowing curb to curb. So that's when we go out and start hitting everything and pushing everything back out curb to curb. And then we hit the alleys, work on that. One of the big things to point out is we changed last year, and we did have a few phone calls on it, but during the snow event, we started, you know, we push everything kind of towards, on Broadway here, we push everything towards the outside of the curves. Once we get through, the snow event stops, everything else is done the next night, then we come in and we windrow everything back out. So it's a little bit different where we always push everything down at the end of Main Street as, as time permits during the middle of the night and make big piles on the Main Street. It does create a little bit of challenge at times for getting across the curb and onto the sidewalk during the snow events, but it's that night after the snow quits, then we bring that in, we windrow it, and then we're actually able to take and load these trucks with the snow, where you can see in the picture on our skid steer. And then we have people that come in, we have a couple haulers that'll come in and run bigger dump trucks so they can load more.
Oh, yes, they do. Yeah, that's living downtown.
Yes.
I'll just smile.
Where do they take, where do they take it to?
So everything that we take out of downtown here, we take out to Riverside Park. So we have a spot we clear in Riverside Park and we stockpile our snow up there, so. And once we start doing other areas in town, cul-de-sacs and stuff, we start building up, we'll pick and choose some of our other areas. The old wastewater treatment plant site, we haven't picked in the name for it, so I'm just going to call it that yet.
Work on that. That's like a story.
That's another spot we actually store some snow. We'll put snow down in that area at times. Bluff, Bluff Parkway, we put some of that in that lot there, just so we don't have so much all the time.
Spring Creek Park? Isn't that Spring Creek that's over there?
Harbor Creek.
It's Harbor Creek Park? I can't have the word harbor or creek, anyone else?
Yeah, yes, I agree, Erin.
CC Park?
Sure.
After we kind of get through that, we get through taking care of that, let's see, where are we? We start working on the parking ride, we do plow that then eventually, and we push everything to the west. So it's, it's quite a process. We get the front end loader up there, we have a small compact loader that we lease just for the winter time, and we use those two pieces of equipment to push all that snow to clean the parking ride out, all the way back to the west.
Brian, I am going to ask this question for the center of Broadway.
Yep.
When you're doing that at night, do you have any hours that you don't allow them to work to clear that? Or, I'm just saying, backup camera or backup alarms are super awesome at 1:00 in the morning.
No, and I know, and it's tough. Just so, our biggest goal on that, and that's a really good, good question, good point, we try to get in and out here before the traffic comes, the school buses and all the people start running through here. So we really try to get out here. So we are down here on the sidewalks and stuff, you know, shortly after 1:00, 2:00 o'clock. So, yeah, it's what we, what we have done. We've talked about the backup alarms and doing something different with them, but then we run into some liabilities, she was not having those going. Because we talked about that with sweepers and different things too, because we have gotten phone calls when we're out that early in the morning. So I just haven't figured it'll work around for that one yet, so. Good question. So after the snow event is done, we really kind of, everything's plowed curb to curb. In the cul-de-sacs, we actually go into a cul-de-sac, we plow them backwards, so all the snow goes into the middle, gives us the ability to get in and out of those cul-de-sacs quickly. And we go back with our front end loaders, a small compact, and we clean those piles up and push them up into the right of way areas, some of the areas we try to pick areas between houses where we can stockpile that snow. Again, like I mentioned, when the snow gets too deep in the cul-de-sacs, that ends, in some certain right of way areas in town, we do haul that snow out. Again, trails are cleared. Typically, we have 48 hours to get it done. Most of the time, we have, most trails are cleared within 24 hours. But our ordinance does talk about 48 hours. So as we go through more snow and stuff, I know it got a little bit harder a little bit later as the season went on last year, but we're typically done in 24 hours.
Do you think that we could get whoever owns the trail between downtown Harbor and Chaska to pay us to plow that? Because that is the only one complete I get.
I know.
I've talked to Lori about it too.
And there's some issues where there's some splints.
Oh, I know, yeah.
So you might have to keep it clear if you tried.
Really?
The county has a no maintenance policy on that. So they said, if the city... So they said if the city wants to plow it at their own cost.
Oh, at our own expense, we could do that?
Yes.
So maybe we could get sort of a group of people who like to jog on it, to get your chumbles out and you could just... That's what they do at the National Forests, right? For some of the...
It's a long...
Well, I can tell you this, it won't be me in the, in 30 of them all doing it.
That'll be where it responds.
Yes. Yeah, so that is a trail that is actually Harbor County and, and we've talked to the county about it and they just have a no trail maintenance policy in the winter months. So we, we stop where we do, we do part of that town so people can kind of get through the depot part.